Epiphany City, or Epiphany, uh, Proclamation. Okay, that's right. Not, not right now.
I'm not sure if I have to note for myself, or what pants, I'm not sure. From last time, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't, the random doodling of myself.
I can't figure that one out?
I can't either. Yes, that's me, that's me.
Thought maybe somebody else.
No, that's me, uh, pants, yeah.
Tear it off.
Sure, if I were.
We could try, we could try to.
Oh, I was there.
We all would like to see it. Congratulations.
We, we had a very good time.
Mr. Mayor?
How you doing?
Well.
I now call or order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December 16th, 2014, at 6:32 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepanney.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
Uh, tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jack Long. And, uh, from, uh, Bayonet Point Hospital, will everyone stand, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this blessed time of the year. We rejoice to be your servants here. We ask that you would bless this group that is gathered for the benefit of Tarpon Springs and its environs. We thank you for each one and their families. We pray for all those who participate tonight, that you would encourage them and bless them as they seek what's best for this community. Lord, we thank you for the joy that comes at this time of the year, but we know there are many who are experiencing grief and sorrow. Would we be sensitive and care for them? Lord, we know that this is a time of peace, and as we look around our world, we don't see much. But, Lord, we pray that you would bring peace to our hearts and touch our lives, that we might share it with others. Bless us this evening. Would your name be exalted, and we rejoice in that name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we go to, uh, proclamations, and the, uh, item number one is, uh, proclamation for Tarpon Springs High School Band. And, uh, this proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, be it remembered that the City of Tarpon Springs and its citizens recognize and commend the Tarpon Springs High School Outdoor Performance Ensemble for claiming another major championship, the Band of America Championship, and be it remembered that the band took first place in the three-day Band of America National Championship held at Lucas Oil Stadium in Annapolis from November 12th through November 15th, 2014, and be it remembered that the band came out on top of dozens of schools at the Band of America Championship, scoring 97.15 with his show, Man vs. Machine, and also received awards for outstanding music performance and outstanding general effect. And be it remembered that the band is the most accomplished marching band in the state of Florida, crowned the 2000, 2001, 2003, 2005, 2006 Division, uh, AA Bands of America. And be it remembered that the City of Tarpon Springs is honored to have an exceptional program where students experience a sense of community. In addition, the perseverance and vision for this outstanding program creates a place where students learn values, responsibility, fair share, and a common goal. Now therefore, in consideration, I, David, or Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby recognize and honor the Tarpon Springs High School Outdoor Performance Ensemble and Director Kevin Ford for their outstanding accomplishments." I'm sure, Mr. Ford, Joyer, Principal of Tarpon High is here. Some of the students, uh, come forward. I just mentioned in front of us is the trophy that was awarded them. I'm not sure if y'all have anything to say. Oh, I know. Take the opportunity, you know? Somebody else.
So, to get an amazing opportunity like this for a band that we have is a huge thing to our community, because we wouldn't have been able to build as far as we got, or as been as successful as we are without the support of many parents who came through the program, many grandparents and great-grandparents that came through the program that supported us all the way. So, right now, I'd like to stop and give a big thank you to all the community members that have ever helped us, Mayor Archie and all the commissioners, because without their help, we wouldn't have gone as far as we did. So, thank you.
I'd just like to, uh, mention, I know that, uh, my colleagues probably won't have something to say, and some of the people in the audience would like to, is that, you know, it seems like we're continually giving the high school band a proclamation, or Mr. Ford, the key to the city, or something, but they do so much to, um, to recognize Tarpon Springs as, to me, the number-one band in the entire nation, and I say the world, but, you know, some people might have, feel like I'm a little biased, but, you know, um, looking at the documentary on the Journey to Macy's Day Parade, kinda put some things in perspective, you know, and I know Mr. Ford would agree, is that, you know, he's out front, he is the leader, but there are so many other people that give of their time, energies, and effort, as well as the students, uh, their parents, the boosters, on and on, that make these things happen. And they, uh, epitomizes, to me, um, what leadership is, and what Tarpon Springs High School is, and, you know, I tell them is that I'm not a former sponger, because once a sponger, always a sponger, so, you know, there's that sponger pride that we all have that have graduated from the high school, and the band is always doing some things to let people across the country know that, uh, Tarpon Springs is alive and well, and we have some of the best young people, uh, anywhere. So, I just wanna say personally, you know, I thank all of you, uh, I know this is just a small portion of the band, but we thank you for coming out, but also, we thank everybody that participates with the band. You know, there's a lot of things that's happening behind the scenes in terms of helping to support these students and this band go on and do bigger and better things, so, uh, I'm hoping that this won't be the last proclamation that I'm able to give. I know it's not gonna be the last proclamation that, uh, the band earned, so I just wanna say thank you for all that you do and how you represent Tarpon so well, and, like I say, I know that my colleagues, uh, will have something to say. Mayor, Vice Mayor Lawson?
Thank you, thank you very much. No, I, I really just wanna congratulate, uh, our Tarpon Springs High School Outdoor Performance Ensemble. Um, we, we get recognition not just in Tarpon Springs, not just in Pinellas County, not just in the state of Florida, but across the United States, and I think that's exciting. Um, it, it, it really is impressive, and I wanna congratulate the members of the band, as well as the, the teachers, the directors, the principal, but also the, the parents that are involved, 'cause I know that's a key component as well, and there's a lot of sacrifices made by the parents, and I, I wanna congratulate them as well. It, it really is exciting, and as, as a city commissioner, as the vice mayor, I am really proud of the contributions made, uh, by our Tarpon Springs High School Band. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna say, I mean, it wa, it wa, it was an honor even one, one year ago to, to, to go to, go to, uh, go to, uh, New, New York, and see you all march, marching the parade, and see that Tarpon Springs sign come, come down whatever cold street that, that, uh, that, that, uh, was, and you all are true ambassadors of our city wherever you go, and you do more to promote this town than I think you all, you all, you all, you all realize, so I, I, I thank you for, for, for all, all, all of your efforts and your hard work, 'cause, um, I, I think it is paying off. Thank you.
Mr. Tarpen?
Uh, thank you. I also wanna echo the comments and the appreciation that I have for every time we continuously recognize the band and all of your achievements. It's certainly a joy to be able to do so on such a regular basis. Um, you are, without a doubt, a shining star, um, within this community. I think everybody recognizes that, and, uh, keep up the good work, but thank you very much.
Mr. Seabird?
I just also wanna say congratulations. Of course, it's all been said, uh, I didn't go to Tarpon High, but I'm a former guidance counselor from Tarpon High, so I feel like I'm a sponger. I'm also a Tarpon High parent. Um, I really love what you guys do every year, and I was talking to Mr. Ford about the citizens getting to see your performance, if we can somehow put it online, or, I know your, your time is very valuable, and you don't have probably time to do the performance, uh, for the city, maybe, with other competitions coming up, but, um, if you all can think of a way to put it online for, uh, everyone in Tarpon Springs to get to appreciate it and see it, that would be wonderful, and thank you for all you do.
Any, uh, public comments on this item? Yes, sir. The forward, you, go to the, probably mistake the name, address for the record there.
I had the pleasure of working at Tarpon High for, oh, about 38 years, and, uh, since the day Mr. Ford came on the campus, it's been different, and it's growing and growing, and I know that, uh, the first question I asked him is, "What's next?" Hopefully, we'll get a great answer for that. I'm sure we will, but thank you for a job well done.
Need a Pro, 911 Bay Shore Drive. Mr. Ford, I love it when y'all practice, 'cause I sit on my back porch in my University of Florida rocking chair, and I have a grand concert of music every night when you practice, so keep up the practice, because it's better than watching TV, and it is really nice to be able to hear the band. Uh, it carries all the way over to Bay Shore and further, and I congratulate you, because being alumni of Tarpon High, when I went to Tarpon High, our band was very small. It's aging me, but you've come a long way, and I really enjoy the music. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? If not, we thank you again for all you do for, uh, the citizens of Tarpon Springs. Uh, next we have on our agenda is Feast Day of Epiphany, we have a proclamation. This proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas his eminence Archbishop Demetrius of America and his eminence Metropolitan Alexius of Atlanta will be celebrating the Feast Day of Epiphany, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is identified by history and tradition as a city in the United States with the longest consecutive celebration of the Feast Day of Epiphany, and the home of the oldest and largest celebration in the United States, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has been internationally known and officially designated as Epiphany City, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is home to St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral, patron saint of spongers, shrimping, and fishing seamen, and whereas the Feast Day of Epiphany is steadfast and true to the belief and customs rich in tradition and cultural Orthodox Christian faith, and whereas his eminence Archbishop Demetrius and his eminence Metropolitan Alexius have bestowed special honor on the City of Tarpon Springs and the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral for their participation on this special occasion of the Feast Day of Epiphany. Now therefore, I, David, or Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim January 6th, 2015, as Feast Day of Epiphany." Mr. Gumbos?
Couple of them here for you. I don't know if you have anything else to say?
First of all, everyone's welcome to come. Uh, I wanna thank the city for all that you do to make our city look beautiful, and the assistance you give us, uh, at every angle, whether it's law enforcement, or, uh, the city in general. I've been involved with Epiphany for about 40 years, and, uh, there's not once that I've asked for anything and didn't get it, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, and for all you do for the church and for the city. Uh, next we have presentation, Bank of America Procurement Card Presentation.
Uh, good evening, Jay Jakus, Chief Procurement Officer. Typically, procurement likes to stay in the background, uh, when at all possible. If we, uh, if we are noticed, it's usually because someone's got a bid protest, or there's an issue somewhere, uh, but tonight, that's not the case. Uh, the purpose of the presentation is twofold. Uh, number one is to provide you with an update of our purchasing card, or P-card program, and provide a history of our annual rebates. As you can see, since 2005, uh, we've maintained a steady increase in the amount of our rebate, our annual rebate. Uh, if you notice on, uh, the, the listing here, 2006 has a misprint, that actually should be $4,513.41. In 2010, our rebate rose to $8,578.80. That was the year the board authorized us to utilize the Hillsborough County Purchasing Card Program. Uh, the program increased our, our, uh, annual multiplier, and that was the, uh, the case of us, uh, the higher rebate, and the $8,000 only reflects six months at that higher multiplier. Next slide, again, there's a, a misprint that should read 2011. Uh, that year, we earned $23,569.75. Uh, that was the first year at the higher multiplier. Uh, we began, began making credit card payments against some of our larger contracts, which were competitively bid, so there was no increase in our price, uh, because of the higher fees charged to the contractors. Uh, we used the disposal of yard waste, uh, about $24,000 a month, and the golf course maintenance contract, uh, which was $44,000 a month. And again, the bid prices were established prior to us, uh, making those P-card purchases. In 2014, we went up to $49,197.02. Uh, e-Payables program was established in April of that year. E-Payables is a credit card-based program. Uh, unique credit card numbers issued to the vendor. Once an invoice is submitted and approved for payment, funds are added to the credit card. It's similar to the, uh, reloadable credit cards that you get as rebates for, you know, telephones and that sort of thing. And once the phones, funds have been taken, the card, uh, balance remains at $0 until another payment is authorized. With the RO plant, we started using P-card payments for, uh, owner-direct purchases. Uh, none of the suppliers agreed to take the e-Payables. That's helped us, uh, increase our rebate dramatically. Uh, the next steps, uh, we continue to expand the Payables program, uh, expand the use of the P-card payments for those not accepting e-Payables, and include the option to accept e-Payables in all of our bid documents. Uh, in our RFP process, we're also offering a five-point bonus for anybody who takes e-Payables. So, with the RFPs, we already have a five-point bonus for any locals, and any locals that will take a P-card payment will get 10 extra, uh, bonus points. And in closing, I'd like to ask Kathy Morgan and Rhonda Simmons, that's the CM, and RS that you see in our bid, uh, bid numbers, to present you with the check for this year's rebate. An amount of $49,197.2. Quite an increase from, uh, 2005, when we only got $4,000. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to be getting some money back, so we definitely thank you and rest of staff for this program. Any, uh, public comments on this item? Uh, the next item that we have is All-American City Quilt, uh, Tour. Uh, Ms. Lemmons and T.
Thank you very much. We are here to present to you the All-America City Quilt. It's here on its worldwide tour, countrywide tour. Um, with me are members of the team that went to Denver and helped to prepare the All-America City application, um, which, as you know, we presented the skit back in July to you. Um, just to give you a little brief background, um, each of the finalists was asked to present a square for the quilt, um, and as being one of the finalists, we put a, a, a square together. It's on the far right side, one, two, three, four squares down from the top. It's a rectangle, it's one of Christopher Stills', um, paintings. That's the one that we thought best typified Tarpon Springs. Um, it was about a year ago when we started the All-America City competition. I wanna give some credit to Bob Wilson, who was a Rotarian and came up with the idea that because Tarpon Springs is already an All-America City, that we should be formally identified as such, and we put together an application to the National Civic League's All-America City Competition. Uh, the National City Civic League promotes civic engagement, provides information on government practices, but it's most well-known for the All-America City Competition, where each year they recognize 10 cities from across the country, um, for their outstanding community and civic-based accomplishments. Um, with the backing of the Tarpon Springs Rotary Club, um, a group of Rotarians, city and community leaders got together, um, starting about a year ago, and began putting together a 27-page application that described all the accomplishments that the city has done over the years. We included redevelopment, how we engage youth, and our health and wellness, focusing on, uh, the, the growth and evolution of Florida Hospital North Pinellas, Peace for Tarpon, the High School Leadership Conservatory, the Culinary Arts and Vet Academies, Cops and Kids, the Kaboom Project, um, our livable, walkable cities, our special area plan, our new business attraction, and our smart code, um, and the Girl Scouts creating a, a Tarpon Springs patch. We put all of that together in 27 pages, submitted it, and found out two months later, in April, that we were one of 10, one of 20 finalists from throughout the country, which in and of itself was a tremendous accomplishment. What we found when we went to Denver in June was that many cities have applied over and over again and never got to that finalist stage, so we were very happy with that in our first-ever application. So, being a finalist meant that we traveled to Denver for the All-America City Competition in June. Uh, we had to stage a 10-minute presentation before a juried group of national and regional government leaders. Uh, we had two months to prepare for that, and an additional challenge was they did not allow any PowerPoints or any kind of technological gadgets, so we had to do it the old-fashioned way by coming up with props and putting together our own, our own words and, and handheld, um, props. Um, we got a, a standing ovation when we presented this in Denver, and, um, as a finalist, we are now part of a network of cities throughout the country, that we have the opportunity to share what we're doing and learn from those other outstanding cities, what is working with them. So, the quilt, again, was one of the several activities that we participated in. Uh, the photograph that we chose from Christopher Stills, we thought best exemplified, um, what Tarpon Springs is all about. I cannot express enough words, uh, of pride and accomplishment for the team that put this together for us. Um, we did it quickly, we did it efficiently, and without these people, we would never have been able to, um, get to that finalist stage. So, with me tonight are Mayor Archie, who was, um, one of our participants and traveled to Denver with us, Jean Coleman, who's a Rotarian, and her husband Jerry, who, um, Jean really put everything together and was our, our leader throughout the entire competition, uh, Sue Thomas, who was chamber president and Rotarian president at the time, Deb Connolly, Karen Owensby from Florida Hospital North Pinellas, Emmanuel Gambo, who I know was here, but he must have left, um, Robin Sanger, Peggy Postus, board member of the Historical Society, Kay Parmenter and her daughter Lindsay represented the Girl Scouts, Ron Hadad, Roger Salu, Chris Alahusos, Kathy Monahan, uh, Jim McNeely, he's a professional stage manager, and without him, we would not have been able to put the props together. He did a tremendous job, um, putting pictures together, getting them up, and, um, helping us out. Uh, Jose Yergulis, who was our homeless outreach officer, traveled with us, and then finally, again, Bob Wilson, who had the idea and helped us follow through with that. So, again, I'm really proud of our city team and all that we have accomplished, and, uh, it's a designation that we'll always be able to use, um, to help promote, um, another aspect of the City of Tarpon Springs. Um, following tonight, the quilt is going to be moved to the Historical Society, the Train Depot, where it will be, um, hanging there for the rest of the week, and then we'll be shipping it off to the next All-America City, which is Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So, again, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for your support of our endeavor and our trip, and, um, it's a yearly competition, so we may be coming back to you again for another, another chance at it. Thank you.
Well, I'd just say, uh, thank you, Karen, and everybody that was on that, uh, team. It was, uh, a, a lot of fun and a lot of work, but, uh, it's something that I think is continuing to pay off for the City of Tarpon Springs, as others around this country find out about, uh, the delightful community that we have here, so, uh, thank you, and, uh, maybe we'll be doing it again, or you will be. Any public comments on this item? Uh, if not, then we will go to our next item, which is Consent. Uh, minutes, November 18th and December 2nd, regular session. Attorney fees, trash mats, uh, Dano LLP invoice, number 47490, Zenzal Law invoice, 13796. Solak Williamson, Dakar Associates Incorporated for RFQ, number 140100-dash-S-dash-JJ Performing Arts Center renovations, authorized the purchase of two, um, dry, dry-prime diesel pumps through, uh, Florida Sheriff's Association Contract, number 14-dash-120904. Extend file number 130031-dash-C-dash-TK, purchase of Dell computing equipment through Florida State Contract, number 250-dash-WSC-A-dash-10-dash-ACS. Increase file number 140089-dash-C-dash-JJ Lighten, SpongeDocks to U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement, number, uh, MA-dash-I-S-dash-1230234, and 11 is extend file number 100020-dash-B-dash-TK Sludge Hauling. Are there any items anyone would like to pull? The chair will entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any, uh, public comments on any of these items? Roll call?
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepanney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next is special consider agenda, item number 12, Employee Dental Insurance Renewal. Sniffing.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm here tonight to ask that the City of Tarpon Springs renews its dental insurance with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, FMIT, using United Healthcare Platform for a period of 12 months, commencing January 1, 2015. I don't wanna belabor anything that's already in the backup, but, um, we started with the Florida League of Cities in 2012, which offered a better program at a more competitive price. Prior, prior to that, over the last 14 years, we have moved from plan to plan, issuing RFPs and getting, uh, getting decent deals, and then the second year being hit because of our claims experience and our utilization. So, tonight, I'm recommending that we renew with the Florida League of Cities. The increase per, uh, per employee, per month, for the city would amount to $1.61. Um, and the, I would recommend that the, the city continue to pay that full share, uh, premium for the employees, and that it maintain its current level, um, of contribution to the dependents, which means the dependent, the employees would pick up the increase for the dependent care.
Any questions for Ms. Sniffing? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 13, retirement consideration, M. Johnson.
Jane, if you'd just stay, just in case we need a... I'll do it, but stay. This is something I'm asking the Commission to do. A city employee came to me probably several months ago for some consideration. To not go into too much background, since it's medical and we've got HIPAA laws and everything else, but he's got a medical situation. He's out there still trying to do his job and work hard, but his ability is declining to do that. He had come to me because he remembered several years ago when we'd offered a retirement plan to the former employees and asked if anything or any version of that could be brought forward. He's a 17-year-old employee, very hard-working, and even with the problems he is having, you still see him out there trying to do the job. I'm afraid if we don't do this, he'll try to work as long as he can. He's getting close to some abilities to get some other Social Security, which he'll do mid-year. So I went back and looked at what we did before, and what you see, the early retirement consideration is the exact thing we did before. I'm asking to do this for the medical considerations, which not only gives him a payment, but also continues his health insurance, which will drop for us, I think, mid-year, because that's when, I think, the Social Security, am I right? That's when that'll kick in, so that'll even drop off, but give him a year of recovery and a plan. One of the things when I brought this forward to you before, obviously, if we have an employee at the top of the realm and we're going to hire somebody new, there'll be a cost savings. And we looked at one of the considerations from doing these, the cost savings, and theoretically, you have a formula in there where we could recover the difference within a two-year, but I always say two to three, because we talk about hiring somebody at 5% of both starting. If there's a real good cement finisher out there, obviously, we're going to pay him some more, so it may not be two years projected, but in two or three years, the costs will make up for themselves. It'll have paid for itself, and again, we'll be providing something for a hard-working, 17-year employee who's gone on some hard medical times, and again, using that same formula, I think we can do it for this individual, recover the money in the two- or three-year period of time, and help him and assist him as he goes forward. So I would need your approval to do that under the plan you see existing.
Thank you for bringing this forward. For me is that because we have done it before, and then another opportunity to let employees know that we care about them and their well-being as we move forward, not only that, you know, there's cost saving, but just that we value each and every one of our employees, especially people that have been with us for a long period of time. I can be supportive of what you have brought forward, you know, so... Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I don't have any questions. I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. First of all, I'd just say that I wholeheartedly support this and echo your comments, Mayor. I think it's always nice to see when an employee can go to the city manager and ask for something like this. I like to see that open-door approach that Mr. LaCores has. Just out of curiosity, is this the gentleman that we've been seeing working on the pavers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm all good. Appreciate it.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 14, ratify appointment of finance director.
Obviously, we'll see Ms. Walker at a Commission meeting for the last time tonight when she presents her item on the budget. She has announced her retirement from the city after a long service to the community and to the city. Being myself, a second-in-command, not only at the Police Department and moving the chief, but in essence, under Ms. Posvet, a second-in-command, moving into the city manager's role, we always learn going up that you try to prepare somebody beneath you as your second-in-command to take over for you. Chief coaching went that process. We've had several other appointments, and in this case, we have a very capable second-in-command, 28-year employee with credentials that you see in the backup. In fact, there was a time, three, four, five years ago, where Temple Terrace tried to steal him to be their finance director, and we were able to keep them from doing that to keep him here. So I'd like to recommend, and it needs to be ratified by this board upon January 12, 2015, to appoint Ron Herring as the finance director for the city of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. You know, first, I'd just say that we wish Erin the best as far as in her retirement. You know, she has definitely served the city very well, and we didn't have anything to be concerned about for her finances, but with Ron and Mr. Aaron, you know, I've had a chance to be around for a little while, both as up here, but just as a citizen, and Ron has always impressed me as an individual that's not only is hard-working, but does his job and does it in an excellent manner without any fanfare. We know that he's received many awards for what he's done from a financial perspective, but, you know, to me is that it's rare when people remember their position. You know, he's never been one to try to act like, you know, he's the director or try to be in front of the director, and what about me? You know, is my time? You know, he's always been the person that's done his job well in the background, and I was saying to someone privately, and I said publicly, is that we appreciate that type of employee, and when you can bring that type of person forward, who's already prepared to do the job and to do the job excellently, but also do it with a manner of humility, you know, I can definitely support this as we move forward, you know. Any comments or motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Audit resolution, item number 15, ordinance 2014-17, application 14-66, a minute right-of-way vacation for Bay Shore Heights. This is second reading.
Ordinance 2014-17, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning right-of-way for portions of Cajaput and DeSoto Way between Loquat Drive and Bay Shore Drive, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance 2014-17 by title only. It's published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on December 5, 2014. We have had a quasi-adjudicial hearing on this ordinance one time before, and so at this time, I would ask for city and applicant to let us know if anything's changed in the interim.
I'm sure...
If you're going to speak, I'd also ask you to raise your right hand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but?
I do.
Thank you.
Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. This is a request to a small adjustment to the vacation of the Cajaput and DeSoto right-of-ways for the Bay Shore Heights project that was previously approved in conjunction with the site plan that reconfigured Cajaput and DeSoto as a looped street rather than two straight, dead-end streets. The looping of the street requires a small amount of additional vacation to accommodate the curved nature of the street connections. The looping provides better circulation, also provides better access for the fire department vehicles. The application was reviewed by TRC with no objections, was approved by the Board of Commissioners at first reading on December 2nd. There were four review criteria in each case. The applicant met all of the criteria. They were read last meeting. I don't know if I need to read those again. They're in your backup. Staff recommends approval of the amended variance, and the additional right-of-way was calculated in the original application fee, so the total of $19,384.43 has already been tendered to the city.
No questions for Ms. Lemmons? Casey?
Casey Crowser, on behalf of Belair Capital Group, 2265 North McMullen Beach Road, Clearwater. Don't really have any comments. This is just a second hearing. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application?
I need a pros 901 Bay Shore Drive. Just clarification. If I may please, on this vacating of the right-of-way, did they pay for this?
Yes.
And how much?
I think Karen just read into the record offhand. I don't know.
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
$19,384.43.
Okay. Just so I know, but, and all the vacating of the right-of-ways for Bay Shore, all the way up in this development, they pay for the vacating of all the right-of-ways?
They pay the application fee that's required by the ordinance. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and do you remember what that was?
$500...
$750 total.
For the application fee in addition to the $19,000 and change. Any members of the public wishing to speak in support of the application? Does either the city or the applicant wish to make a closing statement or summary? Mr. Mayor.
Chair will entertain a motion if there are no further comments or questions.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 16, resolution 2014-38, budget resolution for fiscal year 2015.
Resolution 2014-38, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2014-15. Resolution 2014-38 by title only.
Yes. This is the first budget resolution for fiscal year 2015. It's to carry forward the encumbrance that were outstanding at the end of 2014, to bring forward the donation account balances, as well as to enter in items that were discussed in the budget process but not included in the working copy of the budget that was adopted back in September. It also includes the pay rages that were in the presentation, the amount that was budgeted or intended to be budgeted that was discussed. There is money that has not been allocated to the police and fire pensions yet, and that is provided for in this as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Walker?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Tarpani? Thank you. Ms. Walker, on the second page towards the bottom, construction fund improvements other than building, $2.2 million, $27,000 and change. What's that number?
That is for the water and sewer construction, and it's to provide the money for the Eleanor Boulevard and... A generator. There's a generator that's like 900, and that was over $1 million, that was not included in the bond.
For the RO?
Proceeds. It's for the RO plant.
So the balance of that $2 million and change is for underground utilities on Eleanor Boulevard?
Eleanor Boulevard and that...
The generator?
Generator. Part of Eleanor Boulevard is being paid for out of the penny fund for the part that relates to the city portion, not the RO plant requirement.
And the generator that was over $1 million was not included?
It's not in the Wharton Smith contract, and it's something that we need, in fact, in the future, they'll be providing for another one, because they really need it for redundancy with the power, should there be a problem with Duke Energy.
And the reason we're seeing it tonight is because it was, we weren't aware of that during the regular budget meetings?
It was carried forward. We hadn't budgeted for it, and then when we found that there was going to be money available through some savings in the contract, we're entering it now. On the Eleanor Boulevard, I was told they planned to have that contract awarded before the end of September, and that's why it wasn't put in the budget for the current year.
The generator or Eleanor Boulevard?
Eleanor Boulevard. And the generator, we were waiting to see if we were going to have enough money to actually budget it for the project.
For the RO project?
I'm sorry.
For the RO project?
Yes. That's all. Fund 404 is the RO budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Walker? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. I really just wanted to express my gratitude, Ms. Walker, to you for your many years of service to the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 17, resolution 2014-39, Public Works Reorganization.
If it's okay with you, the mayor, the next four items go together, so I think the best way to handle it is to have the city attorney read all four of them. We'll make one presentation, because they're all interconnected, and then we'll go back and vote individually on each one, if that's fine with the board and so...
Resolution 2014-39, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Public Works organization, including division name changes in building maintenance, Marina Roads and Streets in Stormwater, title change and position upgrade for Building Maintenance Supervisor, transfer water distribution and sewage collection to the Public Service Department and Public Services to transfer stormwater to Public Works, combining a vacant and transferring stormwater positions in order to add new Streets and Stormwater Supervisor Position, adding newly-created Fleet Assistant Position in Vehicle Maintenance, transferring Public Works Division Supervisor Position to Development Services, revising job descriptions, job titles, job pay grades, and compensation within the Public Works Divisions, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2014-39 by title only. Resolution 2014-40, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the Building Development Department, specifically including modifying position title of Supervisor of Inspections to Building Development Supervisor, modifying position title of Engineering Project Supervisor to Project Supervisor, and adding limited supervisory duties and on-call capability, transferring and re-titling position of Public Works Supervisor to Projects Coordinator, revising associated position descriptions, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2014-40 by title only. Resolution 2014-41, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in departmental organization to create the separate departments of Building Development, Planning and Zoning, and Information Technology, and providing for an effective date hereof. Resolution 2014-41 by title only. And Resolution 2014-42, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of Utilities Functions within the Public Services Department and Public Works Department, specifically including adding functions and associated staffing for the reverse osmosis water supply facility to the Public Services Department, transferring functions and associated staffing... facility to the Public Services Department, transferring functions and associated staffing of the Water Distribution Division from the Public Works Department to the Public Services Department, transferring functions and associated staffing of the Sewage Collection Division from the Public Works Department to the Public Services Department, transferring functions and associated staffing of the Stormwater Division from the Public Services Department to the Public Works Department, combining administrative assistance duties of Public Services and planning, revising associated pay grades, position descriptions, and compensation, and providing for an effective date hereof, it's Resolution twenty-fourteen dash forty-two by title only.
Basically, to set this up, this is something we've been working on and looking at for a long time. We've done some minor reorganization things over the past year, year and a half to prepare for this. Obviously, it helped to come out of the economic times we're in. The main two things we've been looking at in all this time, and of course, we've had some changeover of top personnel that's, you know, made this come together, but the main things we've been looking for is efficiency, accountability, better service to the community, and an organizational structure that takes advantage of those things to give us the efficiency and the accountability that we think we need. I've talked to many of you about, about different areas of this, we have brainstormed it internally for a while. I want to thank Chief Cochin, Chief Cochin came in from all of our brainstorming and kind of came in as the outside listener to look at everything, have everybody talk about it again, and put together a total organizational change that would go into effect at the beginning of the next year, and everything we've learned to make projects go better, for the advancement of some of our employees, to give opportunities to our own employees to advance, and we've come up with this package. And I guess we'll start off, Chief Cochin, if you'd just give an overview of where we're going organizationally, and then have each of the areas come up and just give the highlights of what we're doing in those organizations for the, the public and the commission.
Okay, thank you. As you know, over the last several months, myself, City Manager Paul Smith, Tom Function, Anthony Mistraccio, Ari Walker, and several others have really been looking at, you know, organizational structure and looking for synergies and looking for efficiencies. And one of the things that we learned in the Police Department going through accreditation for almost three years is that one word, organizational structure. If you look real quick at, at the proposed citywide organizational charts in Tab nineteen of your books, pretty much the way you always structure your, you know, your organizational structure based on your operational needs, and this is really a simple structure, it's a straight-line organizational chart with eleven department heads accountable to their divisions, reporting right to the City Manager. We kind of broke away the old Development Services Department, where you have one department head overseeing three different departments, that's gone, those departments are now independent, it enhances creativity, enhances communication, and again, everyone reports directly to the City Manager, I also believe it increases teamwork. A lot of the changes beyond this that you're going to see, the vast majority of them are in Public Services and Public Works, especially because we have a forty-five, fifty million dollar RO plant coming online, and there's a lot of things that we had to do with that, hiring employees, hiring people that specialize in that area, it's a major operation. Also, the Building Department, there were some changes there and some vision on how to move forward to, you know, to create efficiency, so if the City Manager has no problem with that, I'd like to kind of have some of the department heads come up and just give a brief overview of, of some of their structure, structural changes that they did, now starting with Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and I'll be brief here, just focusing on the utilities portions, which is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty-two. From the memorandum provided in your backup, a summary of the benefits of the proposed plan for the utilities operations changes. We're going to establish clear lines of responsibility, simplified organization in our vital compliance operational areas. Want to provide consistent position structures across utility operations. Our structure is going to be more standardized to local government utility operations. We're going to provide apprenticeship positions with opportunity for advancement and encourage more promotion from within. We want to provide competitive wage grades, so as to ensure positions remain filled with qualified candidates. And finally, there's no planned demotion of position wage grades, salary reductions, or elimination of filled positions without transfer to an equivalent or higher position. So just to summarize again, from the utilities perspective, and this follows the Exhibit One in this item, the organizational chart, Items one through five. Item number one, we're adding functions for the RO water supply facility to the Public Services Department. Item number two, we're transferring functions from the Water Distribution Division of Public Works over to Public Services so that it's integrated with our water operations. We want to transfer functions of the Sewage Collection Division from Public Works to the Public Services Department so it's integrated with wastewater operations. We want to transfer function and associated staffing of the Stormwater Division from Public Services to the Public Works Department so that it's integrated with Public Works operations and specifically with streets. And finally, we want to combine administrative assistance duties of the Public Services Department and planning to share resources and provide additional administrative support for planning and economic development functions. To summarize, from an economic standpoint, the efficiencies of combining these functions together, we're anticipating to accommodate this within our existing operational revenue. We reviewed it with our rate consultant to confirm that this can be supported by our approved rate plan. I'd like to make a last note about job descriptions, and this applies to each of the reorganizations that have job descriptions attached. This Utilities One has about a hundred and seventy pages of job descriptions, I'd like to tell you, we do our very best to bring you the final drafts in the backup, but there may be some editorial errors, and we're also reviewing some of the, some of the job descriptions with the Labor Attorney to make sure the exempt status is correct, that's a very detailed analysis, it's best left to an expert, so if there are any changes as a result of any of that, I just would like you to know that we'll make those final edits as part of finalizing the job descriptions. Thank you for your attention to this, if I can answer any questions on the utilities?
If you want to deal with this now, you're going to deal with all of them.
Whichever way you want, if you...
I, I don't have any specific questions, so I'll, I'll wait for us to come in.
Good evening, Tom Function, Public Works Director. I echo many of the words that Paul just said about the reorganization. This gives us some opportunities here that we hadn't had before, as far as the synergy as Captain Cochin had mentioned.
Been demoted.
Been demoted, I'm sorry.
Captain! We're going to eat those walnuts tonight, you know?
Well, if you're on my good side, maybe get back up there again. This gives us the opportunity to do a number of things, first is look at job descriptions throughout the departments. For consistency, we're going to move all the positions into a job family, i.e. the Tech Ones, Tech Twos, Tech Threes, and then this will give us opportunities along the way here. The first thing we need to do is change Building Maintenance to Facilities Maintenance. Marina name change to Waterfunds, which incorporate the Dodecanese and the Splash Park, and then of course, any other waterfronts that we may need in the future. There will be a position upgrade from the Building Maintenance Supervisor to Facilities Management Superintendent, that's a move up from grade fourteen to a nineteen. He will oversee Facilities Management Division, which will include Facility Maintenance, Yardways, Solid Waste, Parks, Parkwayes, and Waterfronts. That position there will have to be competitively bid in-house, the gentleman that, that will affect is very aware of that, and he's on board, and he looks forward to that opportunity. Transfer the Ward Division to Public Services, transfer the Sewage Collection to Public Services, and it gives the opportunity to bring the Stormwater Division into Public Works, which again, will work hand in hand with roads and streets, as most people know that the condition of a water system has a direct effect on the driveability of your streets, and vice versa, the condition of roadway has a direct effect on stormwater. New Stormwater Division will be called Streets, Streets of Stormwater. That will, will be taking the MPDS coordinated position, which is presently vacant right now, and combine that with the Administrative Secretary, which will be moving over to the water plant, and open up a new Streets of Stormwater Supervisor position, that'll be a new position that will be competitively bid out on the street. Vehicle Maintenance will also create a Fleet position, to help with some assistance in the Fleet Department, as you know, Stormwater is much like, Fleet is much like Stormwater, there's a lot of regulatory requirements, so with additional help there will help keep us compliant. As a result of these multiple department title changes, coming to a job family, there will be some increases to number of employees, mostly my frontline employees, the lower pay grade employees will be moving from anywhere from grade five to grade six, they will automatically receive, if this is approved, a five percent increase either existing pay or, or at the bottom of the next grade level up, that will actually help, about twenty of my employees that truly deserve it. Will be one other slight change here, we will be adding, and this is not probably in your backup, but as far as a policy here, we created a City Arborist, ISA certified Arborist, that will be designated by the City Manager with a fifteen percent increase, there will be a second City Arborist, again, designate that through the City Manager, when needed, as ISA certified Arborist, municipal specialist, that will give a lot of my employees the opportunity to increase their certifications, and also give them the opportunity to increase their pay. We'll be doing that through all our departments, including Fleet Maintenance, as they get their ASC certifications, we'll give them the opportunity to increase their salary, so we'll give all the employees an opportunity to empower themselves to actually have control of their own salaries. Last but not least, we will remove the transfer of the Public Works Division Supervisor over Development Services under the new title of Project Coordinator. Anthony can explain that a little bit more, but he's done a lot of those same duties within Public Works, and it'd be a great fit, it will actually help us perform a lot more of our, our projects. Any questions? Open.
Now we'll go to the next presentation and take...
Good evening, Anthony Mistraccio, Building Development Director. As Mr. Function just indicated, with the transfer of his employee over to the Building Division, what that does, it's going to combine all our projects into one location, so it's a one-stop shop. All the city projects that come in have to go through our department. What that does is, we have a fine line now, so now we can go through permitting much quicker, plan review will be much quicker, and they also can utilize all my inspectors, so if there's any questions, it's all in-house. The other change that we had was Building Development Supervisor. That was my last position before becoming Director, and basically, we concentrated on the inspection side. We're changing this as a supervisor to oversee the entire division under my direction, they will, I'll have the ability now to provide that customer service. Currently, as we all know, the plan review time has increased lately, so we're looking at fourteen, maybe to twenty business days for a simple shed permit, so if you come into the division now, once this individual is hired and his position is filled, we anticipate dropping that down to the same day permitting. So when you come in with a shed permit, we'll be able to review that right away, issue that permit while you're still in the office. Same thing with commercial, you're at twenty-five business days now for a commercial plan review. We anticipate cutting that in half. This individual, the supervisor, will be in-house doing that plan review, I'd say ninety-nine percent of their time under my direction. What it does, it just facilitates a quicker plan review and turnaround time, which I think enhances the city overall. You know, these changes are all, as, you know, Chief Cochin had indicated, present, you know, in the past, we had Building Development, IT, and Planning and Zoning under the same division. With this separated apart, now I have the ability just to concentrate on Building Development, and we can move it into the future. I want to start pushing and have online permitting. Also, if contractors or homeowners are not at their house at time of inspection, they'll be able to go online, check that inspection instantly, it'll be hands-on. I want to empower the inspectors and give them iPads, so as soon as they leave your house, they can enter their inspection, and in just real time, within one minute, you'll have your inspection results, you know, available to you. And what this also does with this program, it gives them a lot of, you know, quicker response time. Anything they do on your house, as soon as they punch it up on iPad, they'll see every permit ever pulled on your house, every inspection ever done on your house, eliminates the phone calls into the office. All the inspectors now have iPhones, so email capability, phone capability, texting, they could take pictures back and forth, so really trying to push it into the future. Any questions?
No, is that the last one?
Yep.
I, I'd just say first is that when I had a chance to review this and talk with some of the individuals, I, I thought that, you know, it was a well-thought-out reorganization from the perspective of some of the various departments have been, excuse me, lumped together for better efficiency, and sometimes it's hard to change some things in terms of looking outside of the box and trying to put together those various departments that should be together, or some divisions within a department that's better served somewhere else, but I was especially pleased by the things that's happening as far as with permitting and what Mr. Mistraccio would talked about as far as online permitting, things that we know that as we set up here, people come, talk to us about, why don't we do some things, other cities are doing it, having to hear from people about how long it takes for permits and the rest of that, all of that, I think, helps to move us into the future, but everything that's been brought, I can definitely support, I know that a lot of this is happening too in terms of hiring, is because of the RO plant that we're going to be bringing online, but in doing that, there's some other things that's happening, and I always tell Mr. Function that he could use some more help over there where he's at, so a lot of these things kind of help, I think, us to be a better city, and, you know, sometime in terms of moving forward and, and actually saving money, you have to spend some money, because I think that within our building, the department, and permitting and stuff, we lose a lot when we can't get people in and out. Then people start to do things without permits, it's like, if it take me twenty-three days to get a shed permit, why don't I just put the shed up and hope they don't catch me, you know, because, you know, it just takes too long, it's not that they don't want to comply, but, you know, time is money, so I'm, I'm pleased that a lot of these things are taking place as we move forward, and, and all of the various departments are working together, not feeling that you're giving me something or taking away something from me, but how can we work more efficiently together, so I'd just say that I appreciate the way that this thing has come about, and the role that, I started to just call him Captain, just to see what he would say, but Chief Cochin and his input into the whole process, so. With that, Commissioner Tarepani?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also just want to say how important I think it is for, for us as a city to constantly be looking at better ways to make ourselves more efficient, for the apartments, or departments to be run more efficiently, and ultimately leading to a better end result for the residents and our city as a whole to operate as basically a business. So with that, I just, I would, I thank you, I thank you for the hard work that went into this. I think splitting off some of the departments that were under, under the Development Services Department is extremely wise and will be well-recepted by many within the community. I think that's a thought that a lot had, is that those need to be separate from the Development Services. And each and every one of you have my utmost confidence as your, as the directors of your departments, and professional respect, so thank you very much.
Yes, I also want to thank you, I know that this took a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. I enjoyed meeting with you all individually and, and getting all this information, I know that brought up the online application process to you, Anthony, because I, I find that we need to be much more efficient in, in that area and to move forward as some other cities, so I really appreciate you working on that, and thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Ban... Thank you, yes, just as well, I am excited about this process, I think we're taking a, a good step forward as a city in streamlining our, all of our processes and how people report in, in different departments, but like it's been said, I, I am most excited about this, about this new permit process, that is one of the high, the highest complaints that, that we get, and I think you'll find we're going to get more compliance with having an easier process, and thus, and thus just have a, a, a better outcome, just, 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 just... and thus just have a better outcome just overall. So I am thankful for each of you for what you've done and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I just want to say I think this is a step toward improved efficiency, which obviously is a positive thing, and I'd like to say thank you to all involved for their efforts.
With that, any public comments on this item?
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court, and also Vice Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. I'd also like to add that the Budget Advisory Committee has often talked about increased efficiency and providing better services, and I think this will go a long way towards doing that. And I'm impressed with what the city manager has come up with as far as a reorganization plan, and it deals with many of those things that we've raised as concerns, but in a much broader way of handling it, and I think that'll be a good thing overall. Question though. Overall, is this reorganization going to affect the budget by increasing costs, lowering costs, or is it revenue neutral? And I would expect that it might actually be a little bit more expensive because we're offering more services, particularly with the RO plant, and also some of the greater efficiencies to provide those services. But I'm interested, which is it?
I don't know. Do you have the numbers there?
I have numbers.
Okay.
To the general fund for over $20,000. The rest of them are enterprise funds, sanitation $5,200, water and sewer $110,000. Again, we're adding a lot more employees for the RO plant. Stormwater $56,000, vehicle maintenance $4,700. And we had finance obviously run all these numbers for us. And when you're dealing with enterprise funds, the rate consultants concur that this will not, in other words, the rate, this is within the rate structure that we currently charge, so it's not going to affect the rate structure at this point. So it's within the budget, so to speak.
Thank you.
And that was one of the main things about as we're talking, again, as he said, the budget committee, we've talked about all of these things and the ability with positions moving and stuff to have minimal effect on the budgets. I told you at budget time that we would have this coming forward, but really as far as the general fund, we already anticipated the enterprise funds and what monies we'd need for the water plant. But we really needed to do this in a way where we didn't have a great effect on the general fund budget, as you see from that, to do all these changes and have that small amount on there. And again, I would suggest to you that, you know, that will pay for itself and save money with the efficiencies and stuff. We're going to see savings on money. But that was a real important process to take all the ideas we've got from commissioners, budget advisory committee, and as we've looked at this a year and try to put something together that, again, our bottom line of keeping for our plan for the reserves and the general fund budget, that we do it with as little as possible. And the team has accomplished that and been able to do that, as you see. So this is very little impact on the general fund budget to do all these changes that you see here.
With that, there are no other comments. Show of intent and motion.
Yeah, I do want to.
Yeah, you need some separate motions.
Yeah, we.
2014-38 first and then.
Look at item number 17, resolution 2014.
39, excuse me, 39 is first.
Yeah, 24th, 24, 2014-39, public works reorganization.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item 18 is resolution 2014-40, building development department reorganization.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 19, resolution 2014-41, separation of building, development, planning, zoning, and information technology department.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And item number 20 is resolution 2014-42, public services utility reorganization.
So moved. Roll call.
I'm sorry.
We don't have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. I thank all of you that was involved in this project, and we look forward to the improvements. Item number 21 is ordinance 2014-18, application 1433, vacating a portion of Pine Street right of way of US 19 to Jasmine Street, second reading.
It's ordinance 2014-18, ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating right of way for a portion of Pine Street, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County and providing an effective date. It's ordinance 2014-18, second reading by title only. It'll be published, excuse me, we've had a, before I get too far into this, we've had a advertising issue with this ordinance. And so what we're going to request tonight is to defer hearing this item a second time until the January 13, 2015 meeting.
That would be January 27.
I apologize, January 27. You're right, January 27, due to the advertising snafu that occurred.
Okay. Do you take a motion, deferral, or do you want to do comments?
You can take public comments if there's anyone here to comment on the item.
Anybody would like to comment on this, knowing that this is going to really be heard on the 27th, so. So just note that this item will be taken up on January 27, 2014.
Could you get a motion for deferral to that date?
Move to deferral.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Miscellaneous, item number 22A, Eunice Drive, discussion and decision on whether to proceed with this project.
Let me just start off by talking about some added information. There's some information we've added to the backup at the request from commissioners. Again, this is looking at Eunice and the ability of the city to do it. One of the questions that came up, and should have put a better cover in here so you all of a sudden see something about Spruce Street and that you know what it was. The question is what streets are out there to do that we've committed to. First of all, I know we've had a lot of talk about mirrors. My understanding is the lawsuit and the issue hopefully is going to be resolved very soon, eminently. That issue's going to be over, and with it over, we'll be having somebody coming back to us to talk about the project. And of course, any project they do on that land, they have to put in mirrors. So hopefully, if everything gets signed and dotted and we have a resolution, I've been told that immediately, possibly as soon as January, that we will have, you know, some proposals and some talks, and some people will be coming about the development of the land by the hospital, and of course, that would necessitate them building mirrors. So when the question comes out about what streets affected, we've had budgeted in the CIV for many years to do the engineering design of the Spruce Street extension. That is out there. One of the main issues with Spruce Street, of course, is a development that's going on that you've heard about that started through the process by Mr. Lindiakas. And the ability of that development to take some stormwater issues. We've priced it out as best as we can. And again, the Spruce Street is going to be in conjunction with that project going in, because if that project doesn't go in, then you're talking about a lot of cost for stormwater, us buying land. So it's kind of dynamic as Mr. Lindiakas is going through the process. You know, Spruce Street is going to be tied with it. But if everything goes with the project and we're able to do it, you see we have a pricing that was done. Again, it's, you know, very rough pricing, but the ability that doing that road is going to be 234,000, well within the 300 and the money that we have available, 310,865 that we have in the transportation impact fund now. That leads to, you know, some money left, approximately $50,000 if that goes, but the ability to do Eunice. When we've talked about doing Eunice and stuff, one of the important things of doing is obviously some other sources of money. We've identified, and the city attorney will have some information if you wanted to consider it, the ability to assess the property owners for some of that money. We do have some fines out there, whether, that we dealt with the last time, and this commission said they would settle for an amount of money. The initial reaction was that the people who had the fines weren't going to pay it, but that's something that's up, there's going to be some fine money paid for there. So that is another source of money. So again, there's some different sources of money out there that, with that contingency that we could look at, if you dedicate the fine money or some other money if you wanted to do Eunice. But again, the money is there, and barring any unforeseen things, there's a little bit left. There are other sources of money to consider if you're going to decide to put the road through. There are some other sources to do. The only change that has come up as we brought this back forward to you is obviously with the small amount of land to put the road in, Mr. Robertson did estimate to put all of the utilities in also, the sewer, the water, all the lines in there. That's created a problem that I want the city attorney to talk about. Obviously, one of the conditions we put in the agreement with Bay Shore Heights was their ability to do the road for us, which initially probably would save some mobilization fees and some fees. Unfortunately, to do the road, we obviously don't want to do a road and then dig it up at a later time to put utilities through. So that added money could create a dilemma, and with a dilemma that the city attorney will talk about of the ability of the requirement for us to go out to bid for. And, you know, thank goodness he noticed that extra park, and we had just been talking about the road, but obviously, putting the infrastructure on the thing wouldn't be an impact on the general fund that we have to worry about that transportation, but it would come from water, sewer, stormwater, those funds. But it put the amount over a threshold, so if our city attorney would just talk a little bit about that, that might change the plans about us, how we go about and the ability to have them to bid the road.
Yeah, thanks. Again, it was originally conceived, at least from my perspective, as, you know, pushing the road through. And the cost to do that did not exceed the statutory threshold under 255.20 that would trigger the necessity of a competitive bid process for public construction works. When the infrastructure, the potable water line, the stormwater facility, et cetera, et cetera, was added in, it exceeded that threshold, as you can see from the project estimate, of 300,000, which is a cost-indexed threshold. And so there are two schools of thought on this. The statute itself does not define the term project. So it's not entirely clear at this juncture, and some of it's dependent on y'all's discussions tonight and moving forward, whether we have one project, two projects, or a severable combination thereof. My point in telling you all that is if this becomes sort of by synthesis, some sort of a single project, it is possible. And as I listen to the discussions tonight, I'll begin to formulate some opinions that it may need to be put out to competitive bid, which obviously defeats the benefit of having the developer who's already out there doing it. The idea was to save in mobilization costs because his men or his contractors would all be on-site building the other roads required by the project. So again, as we move forward with this process, as I listen to your discussions, I'll keep that in mind and guide you as I can. There are cases out there suggesting that, you know, a project can't be severed for purposes of avoiding the necessity of a competitive bid process. On the other hand, the way this project or these projects sort of were generated organically, I think an argument is, can be made, and is a good one frankly at this juncture, that these are two separate projects because they can sustain independently of one another. Because you put a road in does not mean that you necessarily have to, though it certainly, you probably get benefit of economies of efficiency and scale, that you don't always have to go in and put the infrastructure, the accompanying infrastructure in. And so I'm happy to entertain any questions you have about that, but it is possible, at least at this juncture, that a competitive bid process will be necessary should we move forward.
And then the only other thing I have from the last meeting is there were some residents that came to see me that were, that live along at Cardo's opposed to it. I've asked them if they have opposition or something to say that tonight would be the night to say it, because again, if we're looking at putting, if we're looking at doing that road, I need to get to the design and permitting phase, because it's probably going to be a five to six-month process. So if we're going to do it, and one of the ideas, one of the main ideas, if you're going to do the road while they're tearing up the streets and doing all the construction, to have all the construction done together, to have that, the case where it's not disrupted with one's construction project, and then we're going right in and doing a road after it, you know, we would need to, it's not absolutely necessary, obviously, we'd do the road at any time, but to try to coincide with the schedule of the developer, which is, again, it's a schedule that may change, you know, ambitious schedules seem to change a lot in there. But to keep with that, it's going to take us five to six months to do the design portion, which is 50 in the $50,000 range, the design and permitting portion to try to catch up. And at that time, we were worried about catching up because we wanted to coincide it with the development, which already had its plans and permitting set. So again, it's a case where tonight you'll listen to the citizens for and against. You see there's some options on money. Again, there's one property owner on there who owns six properties. If there is some concern about that and the ability to do the road and the benefit of it, that's where the assessment process would come in. And again, that would be a fund of money to do it. If those fines are paid by the people, and again, the fines are from impact to that whole neighborhood out there. So it's real logical to an area, an ISO for 10 or more years that created for that neighborhood, it would be, it would be a matching thing to take that money from those fines and dedicate it to a road project in that area. Obviously, if that was paid in full, which I'm not so sure, they may come back and we may be talking about it again, but even if it's a little less than 140,000, I mean, those fines could almost potentially be used to pay for a large portion of the road also. So there's assessment, there's the use of the fines if they come in. I'm sure there's going to be some transportation impact money you could use. So whereas if the Lindiakas project goes, Spruce Street goes, and you have that money to do that, there are some other avenues to do it. Obviously, you could tell me to find money from another project elsewhere and do it, but there are other avenues to use monetarily if, you know, the compelling feeling is to do the road. At the same time, Bay Shore Heights is construction and utilize the connectivity and separate those roads, you know, utilizing those money sources, that would be something to discuss before we get into the part of B. So I think we've got some people that's worked on it. We got Brian Anderson, who worked on some of these figures and knows the area and the layout here. Karen's still here. I know one of the questions in backup was some of the financial impacts that could be from developing, so Ms. Lemmons is here for some questions. So I'll turn it over to you and the discussion of this roadway and whether to proceed forward with part B of the item.
Well, first I just thank you and staff for your input so far, and we deferred this when it was.
Appreciate that.
Out, because I know you would like to speak to this. If no one has objections, maybe we can go to public comments, then I'll try to listen to everybody and see where we go. So what we'll do is anybody that would like to comment on this item as far as this road on Eunice Drive, if you come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you will be given up to four minutes.
My name is Richard Duncan, 812 Eunice Drive. I had a prepared statement to read at the meeting on December 6, when this item had been postponed. Some new information had come to light that might drastically change what I'm about to read, but as a commitment to the citizens, the residents in that northern section of Eunice Drive, I'll go ahead and read what I had prepared from that December 6 meeting and then let it fall where it may, or give whatever weight to it it might have. The Tarpon Springs City Commission has approved the residential development of the land bordered by Bay Shore Drive, Loquat Drive, and West Bay Shore Drive. One or more residents of Bay Shore Drive are urging the city commission to extend Eunice Drive north to where it would intersect with Bay Shore Drive. The logic is that. The logic is that while this development of roads and interstructure, uh, interstructure is being accomplished, it would be timely to include Unis Drive in that. The reason for this effort, as we understand it, is that the residents on Bay Shore are seeking an alternative route to escape a low area on Bay Shore Drive which floods during rainy season. We, the residents of Unis Drive, oppose this extension for several reasons. First, in the already approved development plan, West Bay Shore Drive is designated to extend northward to intersect Bay Shore Drive. This extension will provide Bay Shore Drive residents an alternative to circumvent their flood prone area. This road extension is to be funded by the property developers and not by tax dollars from the city of Tarpon Springs. Second, the extension of Unis Drive shows no promise at that time of home construction in contrast to the area already approved for development. A future developer may decide to build on the northern end of Unis Drive and thus pay for the extension. Third, the flood, the flood prone area on Bay Shore Drive occurs north of the area where Unis Drive would intersect it. Therefore, that extension would not provide the exit suggested. Finally, the residents of Unis Drive request that the city commission deny the extension as it is unnecessary, inappropriate, and would increase unneeded traffic on a small residential street. And again, uh, new information might change that, but this is to represent those residents in the northern area. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anita Prost, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. Uh, I'm the one who first came up here and asked to be, uh, to look at Unis to open it. I do not have any reason except for the residents on Bay Shore. I have a way out when there's a storm. When you hit, the storm comes, the water comes up by the Assamack home where the boat ramp is, and it comes up through the drain. It floods, it floods the homes in the area on the corner of Sunset and Bay Shore. You cannot get out sometimes. Then you can come up Bay Shore till you hit the lower part of the hill there where they're gonna put a drain. But those yards and those homes have flooded, and there's no real guarantee that you'll be able to get through, and I'm gonna show you on the map. My concern is for the residents from the corner of Sunset and Bay Shore all the way, as you come up Bay Shore, I'll be able to get out, and the people on my street. My lots are used as parking lots for the cars because their garages flood. We're not gonna benefit monetarily from it, but the developers said now's the time to do it while they're out there, and they could help the city with engineering, with the development, and would be the time to do the work while they're doing their road work. It will also open up the area for the lots there, the people who have those lots, and will also open up the ability for development to put those lots and taxes into the city. I would like to show, because I've had two commissioners, uh, respond to me to come and see the area, and they know the area.
The Assamack house, all the way north on Bay Shore.
If, if you could, I'm not, uh, you know.
Right here, Mr. Mayor.
I, I know, but nobody can hear you.
That's where it floods, where I'm talking to you and the commissioners right now, and you can hear me. These are the homes that are gonna flood. I've walked that street lots to correct, uh, statements that have been made that are untrue. They are concerned now about getting out. There are over, uh, fifteen homes or more that will be affected by flooding. If Unis doesn't open, then we get out. They have no way to get out. There's a large flood, their homes flood, and they're looking at their flood insurance. You can look at all these homes here that will be affected if you open up Unis from the point of Sunset, all of these, down to where you get to the bottom of the hill where I live and the Hoffmann's live. This is why we're asking that the city make the stand and open up Unis so there'll be a safety route for these residents to get out. If there's ever a big storm or any catastrophe should help with a once a year, ten year drought, or even hurricane, we're stuck here, you have a push truck. If you remember that, that's how some of us would be able to get out. There's an emergency route that we're looking for. And Unis has been talked about many, many times to open for the safety of the neighborhood. It also will give a route to go to the beaches, to the parks, and also be a route to the schools. This is why I'm asking you to look at, there are different levels of roads in the city. This is not Mears Boulevard. I don't know that we'll see Mears open in our lifetime. I hope we do, cause it's been talked about for the last thirty, forty years that I've been there. Unis, they were waiting for development to come out there to open up Unis for the safety and welfare of the entire neighborhood, not just Bay Shore, but everybody that lives out there. These are the homes that will be affected, and these are the people that will be affected by that development. I know that the city can find the money to do it.
I know you know what that, that bell means.
Sir, let me finish.
Mayor, you can, if you wrap it up.
I've heard you talk about safety of neighborhoods. I urge you to look at this, this is the time to do it. Your transportation modal tells you what the stand is on opening these roads. We have an obligation to open every road in every neighborhood that we can for safety reasons. And this is why I'm coming to the commission. It doesn't benefit me, but it benefits the neighborhood.
Uh, good evening, Brian Anderson, um, with Stantec. I'm City's Tarpon Springs Stormwater Consultant. One of the things I wanted to mention, uh, the commissioners may wanna discuss is, uh, Bob Robertson is having us look at, uh, providing a, um, a check valve, so to speak, at the Bay Shore and, uh, Sunrise intersection where the stormwater system is there. Providing a check valve on that system that would prevent stormwater from backing up into the stormwater system at that intersection, that would prevent flooding of the roadway during high tides coincide with, uh, you know, north winds that would push the water, uh, up into the bayou. And, uh, so with the, i- if that were to come through, um, as something the city wanted to move forward with, I would see it may be, you know, something that would cost the city less than, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to install, that would prevent a lot of the flooding that would occur at that intersection during high tides. I just wanted to add that.
Well, thank you for that information, Mr. Anderson. Any other public comments on the side?
Hi, my name's Manuel Lindiakis. I live at seven seven three Antcote Landings Drive, and I'm the owner of the property on Jasmine that we've been talking about, that abuts Spruce Street. And, uh, I just wanna talk a little bit about what we, we were talking about. Uh, we, we are prepared, and we've designed our project to accommodate the runoff from Spruce. Uh, prior to the staff changes that occurred this year, uh, we were in discussions with the planning department to see, you know, uh, how we would, uh, what the consideration would be for that. But it, but it would be, uh, I think it would be beneficial for everybody because then, uh, the city wouldn't have to go purchase land up past Carl Flimer Ford. We wouldn't have to put almost six or seven hundred foot of storm drain pipe to tie into that. Uh, what we've did is we've, we've designed, and it's already permitted, to accommodate the, I think, the volume that's in that vault that you guys put in at the end of Spruce. And we also put a, a preliminary design of Spruce Street with, with the sidewalks and the impervious area. So, we were able to accommodate the stormwater runoff for all of Spruce on my project, which is I think gonna be a significant amount of savings for the city, uh, if, if they choose to, you know, work with me on that and, and put Spruce Street through. As far as timing goes, um, uh, you know, I don't know anything about this project out in Sunset Hills. I mean, I don't, you know, my understanding, the little I know about it, I mean, I don't think it's even, the deal hasn't even closed as far as the ownership of the property goes, but this is all hearsay. Uh, my understanding, it's a guy has a contract, he's gonna get all these things promised to him, and he's gonna try to sell it to somebody else to do it, you follow me? There's a difference in that project and my project. I've had this property, with the help of this city, managed to get it to where it is now. Uh, I've been in, owning it for now, almost eight years, I went through the economic times. And the good news is, is, uh, I've hashed it out with the city commission, uh, the planning department now. I think we're down to one or two little things that I think we're all in agreement. Uh, I've got the swift mud permit, uh, I've got the extra volume for the city if it needs it. As long as we can reach some type of agreement, that's fair for me to do the extra work and accommodate for that. Uh, you know, we were supposed to, you know, unfortunately, but we're gonna, we're, hopefully, we're gonna be done with the commission meetings by next month, and then I'm gonna go straight and pull a permit. I've got my funding in place, so this is a real project that's gonna start. Uh, and hopefully, the city's gonna grant us the phasing opportunity so I can do it in phases. But phase one is gonna start, uh, soon as we get done after that February, the January twenty-seventh meeting, I'm gonna go pull the permit to do the site work. Building department's gonna let me start the first building while we're doing that, you know? So my project is a project that's gonna start, it's in ownership status now. Uh, so I don't know if it's a, a choice between doing my, uh, Spruce Street or that street, but I think there's a difference in the status of each of those properties. I mean, like I said, I own the property, that guy's gonna just, what I heard, get the, get their approval, get their vacation, get their Unis put in, and then go sell it to somebody else, and who knows what's gonna happen with that. Um, you know, I think the city's expended a lot of money on Spruce already. They, you know, we got a street light there. I think twenty years ago, when, when Ms. Protus was the mayor, she got, uh, Live Oak put through for a reason, but it's never really got its full value. I mean, it does, it does have its value now, but if we can get, you know, there's hundreds of families that live back where, where I live. You got North Lake, not live, but where my project is, you got North Lake Community, Sail Harbor, you got those mobile home parks, you got that other, you know, there's hundreds of people, families that could benefit through Spruce. And, you know, I don't know what, what the lawyer was talking about, you know, if, if our equipment's out there moving dirt around, I mean, there, we could probably put that road in if, if it's allowed without going through the bidding process for a lot less than three hundred thousand. I mean, I think he said you got three hundred budgeted, and then you could probably for two twenty, but there's no utilities going in there, it's just the road.
Wrap it up there, Mr. Lindiakis.
So, you know, I'm, I'd appreciate it if you'd consider putting that road in, you know? I mean, I think it'd, it'd benefit, and I'm, I stand ready and willing to, to get into discussions with the city to accommodate the storm drains for a fair consideration, and, uh, I think it would be great for everybody.
Thank you. With that, we'll, uh, close public comments, and I'll go to Commissioner Tarpani first, and then we'll kinda work our way around.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to speak, and I certainly appreciate, uh, the board's consideration in deferring this item, uh, at a meeting where I couldn't be present. Um, I'll first start by saying that the extension of Unis Drive is something that I determined important to the city back when D.R. Horton had this property under contract. Um, I think the record will reflect that I felt it important at that period of time and consistently have felt it important throughout the discussion of the Bay Shore Heights project. I feel it's important for a number of reasons. Um, one was discussed tonight in terms of evacuation. Um, I won't go into too much detail about that, but I will say that West Bay Shore, which is being put through by Bel Air Capital, uh, will not service all of Bay Shore Drive as an evacuation route from, from Sunset, which is where Mrs. Assamack lives, um, further, I guess it would be kinda northwest. Um, you do reach that hole, um, which was talked about, which does flood. So there is a portion of Bay Shore Drive that will not be able to utilize or exit, um, onto West Bay Shore or onto Sunset. Um, so there is one hundred percent that element of evacuation that is important to me. Um, what's also important to me, and it is defined in our comprehensive plan, is, uh, the element of connectivity. Um, it's within our comprehensive plan. In a nutshell, it states that, um, if there is a road that intersects another road and is not put through, and there's an opportunity to put it through, you put it through. Um, and there's a number of reasons why you do that. Um, it's, it's found within the comprehensive plan in the multimodal element, which Ms. Protus spoke about. Um, there were a lot of things that were discussed, um, in prior meetings, whether to put the road through or not. Um, you never, I never like to see this board, uh, at odds. I always like to see, for the most part, um, a consensus. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't, there's no hard feelings either way. Um, but to speak about some of those things that were talked about in, in prior meetings, um, Mears Boulevard was discussed. Uh, I think it's been aired that Mears Boulevard, um, one way or another, is not impacted by the extension of Unis Drive. Um, is that right, Mr. LaChorus?
Yes, it should be, again, with the settlement, we should be entering new discussions about the development of that property. And again, you've got it set, so that can't be developed without them building mirrors.
Thank you. So, you can check that off the list. Mears Boulevard is not tied to Unis Drive. Um, the other road that was, that was talked about is the extension of Spruce Street. Uh, that's also been discussed, that that is not affected by the extension of Unis Drive. Um, there's the funding issue, which is not an issue. Um, that's been discussed, Mr. LaChorus, is there any issue funding, uh, the extension of Unis Drive? Is, is there adequate funding for that?
Again, as, as the board would make a decision, there are several ways you'd go, the dedication of the fine money, the assessment process that you have in your backup. The commissioner, I would, I would emphasize that one of the processes of funding it with one of those two sources, as opposed to going out there and displacing another project, um, there are those avenues, fines, and again, and again, talking about assessing the property owners on that street, especially the one with most effect is the individual who has the six properties on there. And with an assessment process, um, you could, you could recoup as they develop, and hopefully, you know, if we get into the, you know, again, a discussion, I know some may be for assessment, some maybe not, but the ability, the first of all, come what that assessment would be, and then if we have the ability, the attorney gives us the ability to access it when it's developed, then that's when, for instance, they wanna develop those places, the person with the six lots would then pay that assessment. Um, that's something to get with the attorney, the attorney on those alternate funds to do. But there are those other avenues on those, the project to be able to use to get the amount of money you need for the road, um, thinking that the design can be done with the rest of the money from the transportation impact. You're talking about somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty for the road. Um, your avenue using those sources could be how, how you would fund it. And again, I know it's thrown a little curve with the competitive bid process, but again, there's people competing for projects, so, you know, not so sure that in a competitive process, we may come close to the price we may have got from the developer. I don't know if the developer, Bay Shore Heights, you know, whoever the person is doing that might put in a bid with all of his stuff mobilized. So, you know, if I was doing a project out there, I certainly would put a, do a bid to do a campaign. So there's other processes with the bids where, where it may be concerned that we don't get that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar savings for the mobilization. Um, it's not so uncertain that that wouldn't work itself out in the big bid process. But again, that's a unknown, so.
Thank you.
Those are all the different financial elements that we could consider.
So, so per the city manager, there's multiple funding avenues that can be had with Unis Drive. Um, so that's, that's checked off the list. Um, to me, this is, this is really an opportunity, not an obligation. Um, it was talked about tonight, an opportunity that we discussed in previous meetings about a cost saving with the, the developer and, and, uh, to put it in terms of economies of scale. That element may or may not be available to us. Um, there was never discussion on whether or not the developer was gonna pay for the road. Um, the city's gonna pay for it one way or another. So do you do it now, or do you do it later? Do you meet the element of connectivity now, or do you meet it later? Um, to speak to the gentleman, uh, who, who represented some opposition within the neighborhood, um, I can appreciate that. Everybody likes to live at the end of a dead end street. Um, it's nice and quiet down there, um, but in, 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 uh, it is in fact a platted road. Um, there are other people who are not in the audience tonight who have seen me personally, who said, hey, keep on pushing, we wanna see Unis Drive extended. Um, and that's just the element of a public meeting. Some people speak for it, some people speak against it. Um, so, there's also the element of the impact on our, our roads, the city's roads, the city's infrastructure. When you have those haul trucks, when you're doing a, a huge project like this, there's damage that can be done to the roads, so why not do it all at once? To me, it's an opportunity, it makes sense, um, it makes sense within our comprehensive plan. The money's in place, there's no negative impact on any other road project. The money is in place, there's no negative impact on any other road project. Um, and it's something that I feel like is important. I always have and I'd like to see it passed tonight and, uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the design phase.
Well, we're not at a motion phase necessarily, so we could just do discussions and then you have an opportunity to make a motion if you still choose. Um, what I do is, uh, Mr. Banther was, uh, at the last meeting, uh, shared with me why I should be more open minded. So I'm still, still there.
I, thank you. Um, first off, just, um, I, I, I just, Mark, could you help me again, just understand completely that, um, putting, putting, putting through Unis would, uh, would, uh, would not, would not, uh, 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 affect Spruce at all according to timeframe and though, though in cost?
Yeah, right now, the money is, as you can see from Ms. Walker, one of the original documents you got from that m- money, um, with, with the looking ahead that Mr. Lindiakas' project is gonna go through, because that changes the whole aspect. Spruce, Spruce Street will train, change dramatically. If he doesn't put it through, you're talking about acquiring, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars added price. So he's going through the process and that goes through, as you can see, the cost estimated, and I had them double check. Obviously, again, there's contingencies. Once you go in, there could be some, but the whole cost of two hundred and, we've already got the hundred, the, the money for the, all the design and design of the infrastructure in there and it may be some less. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the estimate right now in conjunction with that project that you would do it. So in essence, you're leaving.
That's for Spruce, the two thirty.
For Spruce. So in essence, you've got somewhere around fifty thousand, sixty thousand left in the transportation impact fees after that for another project. Again, combining that with, if you decide, if that, again, and it's, we got a lot of asks, but if that fine money is the two hundred and forty or something that you approve somewhere around there, or they come in and negotiate for less, whatever that money, a hundred and forty, eighty, a hundred thousand, you could dedicate that money, and again, that, that money is from fines from that whole neighborhood being an eyesore for all those years. So you could, I think, you know, logically, you're putting that money into the neighborhood where it does, that money could be put in. Or again, the other alternative to do and not affect anything else in the budget is the assessment process and assess those property owners when they develop and stuff. That's where the money would come in to do those ifs.
I just wanna make sure Spruce Street would still be re- ready to go, 'cause it sounds like, um, that would happen possibly sooner than even, uh, Unis with, uh, with, with his time schedule. And I think that is a needed purpose, uh, though in, though, though, uh, though in the city. I wouldn't be in, though in favor of an immediate assessment, obviously, but an assessment once, once they're developed, I think would, 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 would make perfect sense. And so in that sense, we would recoup, uh, the majority, if not all of our costs in that, in that assessment process. And I really do believe that if this area i- is developed, how this developer claims they're, they're, they're going to do it, especially because you have one person who said has, what, six lots on Unis?
Six of the ten.
It's gonna be more attractive to, though, though, to them to want to, want to, uh, build those up. So we have the possibility of recouping those costs, uh, that way as well. The fines, which is the first time that I, that I, 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 I have thought about that, that's a great way to, 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 uh, to do a project that we perhaps did, 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 did not have on our long-term radar. And, um, especially, uh, though, uh, though, as you mentioned, because, um, the fines were, are, 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 they're being, uh, put on this individual or, or this property because of the eyesore to the area. So it's repayment in essence, in my mind, if we're able to use, uh, those, all, 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 all those fines, whatever, whatever, whatever they are. So, um, the part about flooding homes back there, I mean, I, I, I was raised, um, out, 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 out on Wideview, that's only a few streets over. I've seen the flooding out there. I, 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 I would like to find out more about this check valve that was mentioned to put in there regardless of, of, of what happens. And it is important and I think we, 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 we learned, learned, we learned, learned this, uh, when we had Debbie back in, back in, back in, back, back in twenty twelve, that, uh, there has to be, um, uh, uh, exit points for people, uh, on, on Bay Shore. And from what I've heard tonight, there is that portion, but even with the extension of, of, of the West Bay Shore that could still get stuck if we had another major, ma- major flood. So with, you know, Spruce Street still being able to go in, with being able to assess the, um, uh, the people on Unis should ever get developed to, to re- uh, recoup our costs, uh, to being able to use, uh, the fines to pay for a good chunk of, of, of this road. And, and, uh, lastly, with having, having the, uh, the evacuation route in place, um, I would be in favor of this project, um, to, to go forward. And I think it just, it just makes sense, uh, to kinda have this all fit together and not develop this whole area and leave one road undone. And I think it does create incentive for the, for that developer, well, for that, for, for those owners on, on, on Unis that have the vacant lots to build and just complete that, 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 that whole area. So, uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, i- if I might, I know, uh, we haven't heard from Vice Mayor and how he feels of, uh, Commissioner Seabird. I just, just for some understanding, because I, I did go out, I was asked to go out and look at those lots and I, I went out there, but, uh, it, it was... We're talking about Unis, which side of Unis? It seems like both sides are blocked. I mean, I tried to get through on one side, I couldn't, and I went to the other side, I couldn't get through. So I don't think we're talking about both sides, we're just talking about one side, right?
May I say something, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, correct. So we're talking about the north side of Unis Drive. And when I, when I asked you to go out and look at the south side of Unis Drive, that was done so as an example to see the difference between putting the road through as a whole or putting the road through as each individual lot gets developed. And if you looked at the south side of Unis Drive, you saw where there was stretches of asphalt from twenty years ago, stretches from five years ago and, and individually piecemeal developed, which is, you know, something that is not necessarily, in my opinion, to the standard of the city. So if you put the road through at once, which is what we're talking about, the north side to Bay Shore Drive, you don't end up with a potholed street.
Okay, 'cause I, you know, when I went on one, I couldn't get through. When I went on another one, I couldn't get through. So, you know, it seems like there's two of them that need, you know, if we're gonna open it up. And I'm, so it was on one on the north, not the other one.
The one on the south is a prime example of why I think it's important to put this road through.
Okay, I'm just trying to piece together, you know, my little information I got from one.
If you're coming from the middle school.
Right.
It would be the portion that's closed off to your left, you would take a left and that portion that's closed off to the left.
Right. And when I took a right, I couldn't go there.
No.
Apartment building, I couldn't go through that one either.
Until somebody develops along there that won't be put through.
All right, just, just trying for some information. Now, we talk about assessment, so we're gonna assess just the individuals that have the undeveloped property? Are we gonna assess everybody on the street? I mean, I, that's just.
Just the vacant lots.
Yeah, 'cause we've already got, if you, if you see it on there, where's the houses are, there is a partial road there. So where there's woods, where it starts and there's no roads, uh, I would think those would be the properties to be assessed.
So we wouldn't do anything to upgrade the, the street that we already have residents on. We would just say whatever they have there, they have, and we'll start from there and we'll, we'll upgrade, uh, put in a new street. So we wouldn't do anything to the present street in terms of trying to bring it up in terms of any standards or anything.
Well, relative to.
Tell them they could do that for free.
Relative to your assessment question, uh, properties can be assessed that are going to receive, uh, or derive a special benefit from the, from the improvement or the service provided. So, you know, as I'm listening to the conversation, uh, there are potentially, uh, properties that, that receive benefit. I, you know, perhaps in the way of an additional evacuation route or perhaps in the way of, um, improved drainage, um, and perhaps in some other ways that haven't been discussed yet. But those properties can be assessed whether on Unis or not that are going to receive a special, uh, benefit from the, uh, from the construction of the road or the attendant, uh, infrastructure.
Saying that we can, we can actually assess the people on Bay Shore, because they'll be using Unis as their evacuation route.
I think that would need, need some more staff analysis as to the benefit they might receive, but I think it's legally possible.
And I just say that I'm not really, you know, it's been a long time since we looked at, um, having any type of, um, uh, access to, to any resident as we build the roads, basically the developer has built them. But like I say, I'm just trying to understand what our thought process is now. And I see that it's changed a little and I'm, I'm not really sure that we need to rush Unis. And I just say it from this perspective. If we have to go out to bid, then what was really talked about as the main reason we should move right now is mobilization, because the crew is already out there. So then there is a possibility of savings, but 'cause the crew is out there. So if the crew is not out there and we need to go out to bid, why do we need to rush it? And if we went out to bid, you know, which I have a real problem in terms of going out to bid and finding out exactly how much it would truly cost to do it. I don't think that it's good to be talking about assessing people for a road that didn't ask you for the road. You know, the developer, the people that own the lots are not asking for the road. But we talk about, we will build a road and then we will make you pay for the road that you did not ask for. I thought that one thing that one of the gentlemen that came up and was talking about the people that's on Unis now is that if somebody wanted to develop and they wanna build a road, then they'll build a road and then they'll have to pay the price anyway. So why should we move on making somebody do something that they don't wanna do? And with all due respect to the individual who came up with the map and didn't wanna go over to the podium, you know, my little time in Tarpon Springs say that when people really want something, they will definitely let you know. You know, that you don't have to worry about being, speaking for fifteen homeowners that truly want something. They will pick up the phone and they will let everybody know. And if they're not comfortable talking to me, which most people are, there's, everybody else is up here. And I'm not hearing from anybody out there that says that they want the road. That's what causes me the most concern about putting it in. But I'm saying, if we're not gonna use the developer that's out there now, what's the rush? If we have to go out to bid, then if you wanna go out to bid, the bid comes in too high, then we don't do it. I mean, um, I did hear Mr. Lindiakas talk about Spruce and I know we have some figures down, but if I was reading between the lines, I kept hearing him say something about some consideration. I don't know what that means. I think that we should know exactly what that consideration is, because one of the things that came out, and I asked Ms. Limmers if she would kinda explain the memo that she had in terms of how we can possibly recoup money, because we talked about once they build the homes there, then that was the property taxes and the rest of it and how we get our money back. And it seemed like it was gonna be a long time trying to get the money back that way. But when we look at what's gonna happen on Spruce, we have some projected estimates and, and it is some things in there in Ms. Walker's memo that I think is pertinent to our conversation. The city manager knows because he went, uh, with me, I went with him, we went together to talk to DOT about not taking that light at Spruce. Because they were saying that light at Spruce was basically there because of Lowe's. Now Lowe's is not there, so they said that they was gonna take that light. Now, through some other political figures intervening and the rest, that that light was there. But now with Spruce opening and the rest of it, there's adequate justification for not removing the light. I thought that it would not be the best thing to remove a light that you've already put there, you've already expended the money and the rest of it. But their thought was, hey, we deal on signals and how many time people are using it and the rest of it. So, uh, it was touch and go for is removing that light from there. But Spruce and when we're talking about Spruce and we're talking about any street, all of these figures are estimates. We all wish that they come in lower, but something happens when people have to go out to bid. They never seem to hardly come in lower. Most of the time, they come in higher. So that's something that I'm concerned about as we look at Unis or Spruce or any other street, is how much it's actually gonna cost us. Then we say that, you know, we wanna be, you know, objective, you know, and we're looking at opportunities, not obligations. And what happens on mirrors? Well, one of the things that, that, that's happens on mirrors, if they open up that street, if they talk about opening it up, well, for lack of a better word, trying to understand exactly the type of street they was talking about putting in there. But the street they would put in there would not have any sidewalks there. So you got a major road that would be, um, an evacuation route without sidewalks. My thoughts is that if we have dollars to expend some type of way in roadway and the rest of it, why don't we look at what we can do on that road? Because we talk about walkability and then we say walk in the street. Let's go out to Unis, we have residents come here, say that they don't want it. We haven't had one person out that way that said that they want it, not one, that lives on there, you know? Even though the one person comes, speak for everybody in that whole area out there, anybody in that area they speak for. But other than that person, there's been nobody to ask for the road. So my thought is, why are we talking about rushing this when there's no savings on, uh, mobilization? We could go out to bid to find out exactly what we want to, if that's what we wanna do. Nobody up here, I think, would want to, uh, make somebody pay for that road that lives on Bay Shore. And to make the present owners who didn't ask us for the road pay for it, I don't think is fair. So I'm at a point of why are we trying to push this with all of the new information that's come forward to us? Why do we think that this is so important now that we can't take some time, wait, look at what's happening on Spruce? Because we have an opportunity, maybe that's gonna come in, it's gonna cost a little bit more money. Um, Mr. Lindiakas is a, a nice man. I know that he just want to just let the city utilize some of his property in terms of stormwater and the rest of that. He don't want any type of compensation for it. He just wanna do it because he's a nice guy. But business dictate that he probably need to have some type of trade-off. And more than likely, it's gonna be a dollar trade-off. So I think that if we want to really be, um, prudent as we move forward, we would try to see what's gonna happen with that property. Since there's no rush now, I don't think it is. You know, unless somebody tell me you can divide out. We've already talked about this as, as one project. If we were to put all of the, um, um, pipes and rust of that that we need to with that roadway now to save, we say, no, we don't need to, we can do bid one and then use the developer. To me, that's how you end up getting sued, because of somebody say that you're trying to circumvent the bidding process, you know? So that's my thoughts as we move forward. And I did go out there and I was trying to figure out why we wasn't talking about the other side of the street as we talk about the one side. Why didn't we talk about doing both of them? Because it's gonna cost too much or, you know? I think that somebody on the other side of the street had wrote the city asking us to pave it. And we didn't have the dollars to do that. And now we wanna pave a side of the road that nobody's asking for. So those are my thoughts. And I wish that we all can agree, um, but, you know, whether we all agree or not, I think that, you know, I would hope that we all are saying what we believe is in the best interest of the citizens of Tarpon.
So I don't know if you wanna speak now, Vice Mayor, you want me to go to Commissioner Seabird?
No, I, I, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Um, I, I first would like to ask the city attorney for a little bit of clarity. Um, you, you spoke. You, you spoke a little bit earlier about this in terms of reaching a particular threshold and whether or not this would have to go out to bid. I, I wonder if you could speak a little bit further on that?
Uh, yeah, generally, public construction projects, public construction works that will exceed that three hundred thousand dollar index threshold would, uh, need to be put to a public competitive bid process, a bidding process that we've been discussing. And so the question becomes whether what we have here is one project or two, because the statute that requires public competitive bidding also contains an explicit prohibition against dividing projects for purposes of evading the competitive bid process.
So just i- if I understand and you can provide some clarity on this, on, on one hand, the city could say, hey, let's do it all at one time because we've already got mobilization out there and we, we can do it all at one time. But yet we would have to say, but it, but it's separate projects in order to make sure we don't reach that threshold?
Yeah, a- and let me, let me also share that I don't have a lot of case law to go on relative to this statute, so I'm, I'm speculating on how a court may answer it. I think the better argument based on what I've heard tonight is if you say, let's go ahead and do it all at one time, probably going to be construed as one project. And I would recommend strongly that it be put to the competitive bid process for the reasons that the mayor mentioned.
So it would have to go through, in your legal opinion, it should go through the competitive bid process?
If the road and the infrastructure are done concurrently, yes.
Okay. Another question I had, I guess this is for the city manager or perhaps the department head. A, a comment was made, uh, and I wrote down and I put it in quotation marks, they, they have no way to get out. The, the implication being that Unis is needed as an evacuation route. I, I wonder, Mr. LaCorus or if you want to have somebody else address this, is, is Unis required based, based on some kind of data as an evacuation route?
Well, again, let me talk about what I've told some people out there. And then I've got Mr. Anderson there who's looked at it and he can talk about what his attempts to do on both sides will be to alleviate that. Obviously, we're going to make attempts on both sides to keep that from happening and cutting those people off. But these last couple of years, I've seen incidents in storms and places flooded that, you know, I've been here my whole life and, uh, you know, I've seen places flood I never would have thought. You know, one of the questions that was brought up to me is these things we're doing and, and he can talk briefly about what he's doing on the one side so that people could get the West Bay Shore and then the new idea that's just developed what to do to the other side, you know? I was asked at one of them, can you absolutely guarantee that those changes are going to keep that from flooding blocking off? And I said, me personally, no, because I've seen too much of us putting stuff into effect in these hundred year events that's gone beyond that that's doing it. But if you would, Brian, just talk about what we're doing on both sides to, to try to alleviate that. But again, I as city manager, from what I've seen, couldn't guarantee that when we put all this in place in both sides, that there would not be a case with the tide and the storm, that the possibility could be for, and maybe he can tell you how many year event, that it could still possibly flood up.
Certainly. One of the things that we're looking at with the Bay Shore project is, uh, which is on the, would be the north side, um, there's two flooding areas. You have the, you have the sunrise and Bay Shore location where the boat ramp is. And then along north of that on Bay Shore, you have a, a low area on, in the roadway that floods today. And with the Bay Shore project, they're going to be upsizing the pipe at that low point today to allow more water to convey through that. And they're going to slightly raise the road a little bit to prevent the road from flooding as well. In addition to that, they're going to be looking at adding one of these check valves to prevent high tide from entering the system and popping out in the inlets and causing roadway flooding. Their engineers have looked at it and they've determined that the roadway floods today for a ten year event. So what we've asked them to do, what the city's asked them to do is in their analysis and their engineering with Bay Shore, is to prevent flooding to occur at that location for the twenty-five year event. And, uh, their engineers have been able to demonstrate that that is actually going to take place with their design. They're going through permitting of that now. So with the Bay Shore project coming on, it would, um, raise the protection of the roadway at that, at that location to prevent flooding up to the twenty-five year event. At the Bay Shore and Spru- uh, I'm sorry, Bay Shore and, uh, um...
Sunset.
Sunset, thank you, sorry. We are looking at that location now, um, and to, and to looking at providing a check valve there, which would only prevent high tide from flooding the roadway. I mean, with the, with the, uh, with the, uh, boat ramp that's located there, if you had a, a very large storm event, I mean, we're not going to build a wall across the boat ramp to prevent water from going across, you know, the guy's road. So, uh, putting the, putting in the valve there would prevent flooding from occurring only with high tide events. It's not going to increase the capacity of the system. It'd only prevent flooding that are, that is, you know, occurs with high tides.
Thank you. A, a further question that I have, I, I guess for the city manager. A, a comment was made that the city will pay, will, will pay for Unis one way or another. And, and the, the comment was, do we do it now or do we do it later? And I guess I just want to seek clarification. If we choose to do nothing now in terms of Unis, if, I don't know, five years down the road, ten years down the road, um, if a, if a developer comes in, I, I understand there's, I don't know, six to ten lots owned by one, one particular owner?
Six of the ten.
Six of the ten. So i- if a, if they choose to develop that, at that point in time, would the city be paying for the development of Unis or would a developer be paying for it?
Developer would pay to put the road through to the, the developer would be the one to pay for that.
The developer would be paying for it?
Yes.
So I, I guess one of the things we should look at as we discuss this this evening is whether or not we as the city of Tarpon Springs with taxpayer, taxpayer money, should we be paying for Unis or should we allow that to be paid for by a developer at, at the time in which someone chooses to develop those lots? And I, I, I guess that's something to consider as well. Tho- those are some of the things going through my head. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems to me that there are quite a few ifs as far as, uh, the budgeting for, for Unis to be completed. Doing the math, uh, if we do the Spruce Street project, which I think is, is pretty essential, we'd still have to come with a, up with over two hundred thousand dollars. And that's just an estimate. Unis was not part of the original site plan. I know that we had two, uh, public meetings, uh, with Bay Shore residents and I don't know that there were any concerns with completing Unis at the time and have not seen other residents from, um, Bay Shore here wanting Unis to be completed. I appreciate, uh, the residents, uh, from Unis coming and, and speaking tonight. I think that there are a lot of projects that are necessary in, in the city. I know when I was campaigning and I walked every neighborhood, the number one, uh, concern was, uh, infrastructure. And, um, a lot of residents are concerned with streets being completed, the potholes and, and curbs and sidewalks. And, um, I just feel that many residents would feel that there are other, uh, things that we need to use money for, that we, uh, may have funding, uh, for. And if a developer can complete Unis in the future, uh, if those lots are, are finished, I would think that we should, we could wait for that. I'm sorry, I don't agree with you.
Yeah, I'll just, if I may?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Based on the comments that were, that were said, which is fine, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, own opinion, and I can appreciate that. I think the first thing that's important to understand is that, uh, being familiar with our city budget and our different enterprise funds and different funds that we have, you have to understand how different projects are paid for, okay? Sidewalks being one, streets being another, et cetera. So it's not just one big pot of money that infrastructure is paid for out of, okay? That's the first thing that I would take into consideration. Second is, because there's six lots, that doesn't mean that the developer is going to come in and build all six of those at once, okay? By not putting in the road and the quote unquote developer who owns the six lots, him doing that piecemeal, you're going to end up with exactly what we have across the street, um, which is one person comes in, wants to buy a lot, they're responsible for thirty feet of roadway, it's substandard, there's no infrastructure or utilities underneath it, we don't collect as many, as much impact fees, it's not a win-win. The other thing that I'd like to, like to mention is that, um, within the analysis that Ms. Lemmons did, um, there is a financial gain to the city when a road is put in, lots are more desirable to somebody to build, the city collects over ten thousand dollars worth of impact fees, okay? So let's just say there's ten lots based on her analysis. If they're all developed, which they probably would because it's a desirable area, as we've seen with the Bay Shore Heights development as a whole, um, that's a hundred and three thousand dollars in impact fees collected, okay? Which can offset some of the expense that's put forth to build the road. That said, there's an additional nine thousand dollars based on a two hundred thousand dollar home, uh, assessment each year in ad valorem tax revenue that's collected to, by the city. So that's also a benefit by having a desirable lot in place for somebody to come build a home. Looking at other economic benefits, uh, you get more penny for penniless, you have more families living in town, more people living in town, it's centrally located to schools, parks, very desirable, those people spend money in town, they shop at the Sponge Docks, they shop downtown, et cetera. So anytime you can add more people, um, to your demographic, to me, is a good thing. But those are just some of my comments based on what I'd heard. If we don't do it, I think it's, uh, definitely a lost opportunity, but, uh, everybody's entitled to their own opinion and, uh, we can agree to disagree.
Oh, I, I thank you for that. I'm not sure where we're at. I know you talked about a motion, um, earlier, so, you know, we're at that point. But if you can just tell me this, is that how, how do you consider this a lost opportunity?
I think it's a lost opportunity because we're at a point where there's hype for Bay Shore Height or Bay Shore, the Bay Shore Heights development. I think that there is regardless of whether or not there's a mobility element with this Unis Drive going through with the Bay Shore Height development. There's an economies of scale to the development. I think there's a better chance that by having this street put in, I think there's a better chance now for somebody to come in and grab those lots while they're doing the Bay Shore Height development. That's the only reason why it wasn't discussed prior to is because there was no ownership by Mercury Credit Corp. or a willingness to sell by other owners on, along the Unis Drive. If you think back to the lots that were contained within the Bay Shore Height development, there were the Mercury Credit lots and then there were also lots that were owned by individual owners that the people who put together the Bay Shore Heights development were able to obtain contracts for. So I, and there's also the element that I, I truly believe that it is, uh, an evacuation route for the people in between Sunset Drive and the hole where, where they're not putting the road through, where there's the stormwater, uh, pipe going through, that those people are still going to be, uh, you know, without a way to evacuate on a ten year storm, which isn't even, I mean, that happens every ten years or, or sooner. I mean, look at Debbie. Debbie was a hundred year flood and people could not get out. So yeah, I, I mean, I feel like it's, it's a little bit of a, of a lost opportunity for sure. I, I, I just feel like you're going to see exactly what we see on the south side of Unis Drive, uh, which is subpar. So, I mean, the money's there, uh, I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
And I was just asking, just trying to get a better understanding about the lost opportunity because, um, the same thing was said about the, the project that, that's being developed now. Is the first time that project was denied, it was a lost opportunity. Nobody else was going to ever come in there, nobody else was going to ever develop that property. And then what do we look at? Year or two later, somebody else says, you know what, I've got a better project to put there. So I don't think that if we don't do it tonight, it's a lost opportunity. I think that if there's enterprise and people out there that look and see what's already being developed, see that they, I've got six lots, I can do this, I can do that, the opportunity for them to pursue that is still there. We're not having any savings as far as the city's concerned because what we thought could happen for is development, that's developer out there doing it and saving some money is not actually possible. So it's like being back to square one. You know, we look at it, if somebody comes forward and do it, then they do it. If they don't, then they don't. But what I look at right now is that, you know, we're at a point of, we've had discussion, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about anything else. But if there's a motion to move forward, if there's a motion not to move or whatever you want to do, it's not as a time.
Yeah, I'll continue, uh, Mr. Mayor, with the motion, uh, to, um, ask staff to move forward with, uh, design phase, which also regardless of whether we go out to bid now or later, you still have to have the design phase to do. So whether we build the road now or later or at all, in order to obtain a bid, we have to have a design phase. So that's my motion.
Second.
Uh, do you have a cost on what the cost is for the, you know, we talked about the about the design phase?
It was in the area of fifty thousand dollars, I believe.
Fifty thousand dollars?
It's between fifty and sixty thousand dollars.
Look at, rolling the dice. Well, uh, you heard the motion, so there's no other comments, uh, roll call?
Commissioner Seabird?
No.
Commissioner Manther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrpanny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
No.
Mayor Archie?
No.
I think that would mean that we don't need to move forward with twenty-two P. So, uh, that will conclude our agenda for this evening and we go to Captain Rising to the chief.
No comments, Mayor.
Attorney?
No comments.
Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Mr. Baffert?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Could we start pending?
I would, uh, just wish everybody, uh, happy holidays. Tonight's the first night of Hanukkah, we have Christmas coming up and it's a great time, uh, to be in Tarpon Springs and, uh, just wish everybody happy holidays.
I also would like to wish everybody happy holidays and a happy new year.
Um, first I'd just, uh, say on your, on the dice, there's some information as relates to Peace for Tarpon. Gainesville had a chance to come in and talk to the Peace for Tarpon Group and decided that they would like to have Peace for Gainesville. So what's happening in Tarpon about being a trauma-informed community is starting to move across, uh, Florida and across the nation. And I'd just like to thank, um, you know, Peace for Tarpon and for former, uh, Vice Mayor, Robin Sanger, who is the founder of that for their efforts in moving it. Just to read one part of what was being said by others in that health arena that Tarpon Springs is ten years ahead of the curve in the field of community health by talking in terms of, uh, being a trauma-informed community. And there's information for you to, uh, look at at your pleasure. The other thing is, is that, you know, uh, in the new year, if we could, uh, maybe have a discussion about the, uh, tree ordinance, you know, I've had a resident talk in terms of having some health concerns and the rest of it. And I think that when the tree ordinance went in, uh, it was to try to deal with the developers and their, uh, zeal in tearing, uh, cutting down trees. But there's also effect as far as the residents of Tarpon who are not going to be massively cutting down trees is having a financial impact. And I just like for, and I told her that I would bring it to the commission and we'll put it on the agenda for as a discussion item to see if there's anything we think can be done. Another thing is sometime, uh, by the, the next new year is that can we find out what's happening on Martin Luther King with the, uh, lights there? I, if people tend to think that I'm personally responsible for those combs that's out there. So we can see when we're going to put lights back up, uh?
Hopefully, hopefully they're going to be here and it's real, it's real soon.
Real, real soon.
Hopefully, in fact, by the next meeting, I'll be able to announce that the lights are in there, uh, but I was hoping that not at this meeting, the light was, lights were going to be in there. But, uh, um, hopefully they're on the way and I'll be able to report at the first meeting of the next year that they're in and, and coming. So I'll check on that again. Again, I was hoping to be able to announce that before the end of the year, but let's see if I can try to start the new year with those lights being here and installed and, okay.
Okay, that, that sounds good to me. With that, we'll adjourn our meeting at, uh, nine oh two.